No, I learned that with my son.
Sean's blanket.
I learned that with my son.
They have those little, what do they call that, waffles?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, it is six thirty and we will call the meeting to order. We'll call, please.
Dan Campan.
Here.
Mar.
Here.
Schnelly.
Here.
Veno.
Here.
Molesant.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Smithback.
Here.
Polda.
Here.
And Majewski is out tonight.
Thank you. Okay, move on. The next item is approval of minutes of September seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Approval of minutes of October fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public appearances under number four A. This is for community input. At this time, we have anybody that wants to speak to the village or to Plan Commission. Either items are on or off the agenda. The Plan Commission can only comment on procedures, et cetera. I will expand a little bit farther on this. Item four, excuse me, five A, or excuse me, seven A. Originally, it was going to be a public hearing for the proposed development at five twenty-five thousand two-two-one and five-two-two-seven County Highway CC from applicant is Regency Development. That public hearing has been postponed. If you folks want to talk about this time, you can. We can't really give you any real feedback. We'll respond as best we can. Otherwise, that public hearing will be occurring in the future and it will be posted at that time. Yes, ma'am.
We do have one registered person that would like to talk.
That's fine.
No?
Uh, yes, because that's where we're, yeah, because we're not going to talk about anything like that during the actual discussion for conceptual use at that, or conceptual purposes, at that time will not be a time for public input.
So it's Bob Batista.
You wouldn't have to have a diagram of the property, would you?
Uh, yeah, I can get which of the.
Regency.
A. Yep.
Okay, so we'll have to ask you to give us your name and your address, please.
You bet. Bob Batista, two eighty-two Eagle Drive, Oregon.
Thank you.
Wait till this comes up. Okay, will that work for you? Yeah, that's, that's perfect. Okay. I mentioned to the developer at our last meeting that they had suggested an idea, and I just wanted to bring it up again here for all of you because I don't know if you've heard of it or not. The way the property is laid out right now, traffic comes off of CC and for buildings three and four, which border with where I live on Eagle Drive. It brings the traffic all the way back to the southernmost part of their lot and shines lights into our houses right on the opposite side. So my suggestion was move the entrance to building three to the north side of the property. Does that make sense? Right now, it's on the south side of their property. And then bring the entrance to the underground parking. I'm sorry, this is underground parking. Bring the entrance to the underground parking for number, building number four to the front of the building, the way they have it on building number two. If you do those two things, you won't be pulling all that traffic, all the underground parking for buildings three and four, all the way back to the southernmost part of the property where it's going to shine into homes that have lower level, lower, finished lower levels. That was the idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Even though there's no public hearing, you certainly are welcome to stay for the remainder of the, the meeting. We like an audience. Gets lonely here. Okay, nobody else, nobody else? Okay, we'll move on then. Communication, business, none. Unfinished business, none. New business is seven A. For discussion only, conceptual review of proposed multifamily development at five-two-two-one and five-two-two-seven County Highway CC, the applicant, Regency Development.
All right, I'll give a little background here and then have the developer come up. So, um, as you mentioned before, we had, um, thought we'd be ready to do our public hearing GDP tonight, but a couple falls still up in the air and want to make sure we don't skip this conceptual review with you all since there have been some major changes since the last time you've seen it. So most notably, uh, the developer has been able to get both properties owned by the Eps and the Finks under contract. So, um, he decided to go back kind of the drawing board and look at what would a development on both of those parcels, which total seven acres together, um, look like. So, um, what he came back with was four three-story buildings, not four-story anymore, but four separate buildings, um, with underground parking built in a phased approach. So one building at a time, starting with building one, close to Highway CC and going back. Could potentially be a pool, some shared amenities, clubhouse, sport courts, um, things like that. The concept plan that was in the packet was that two hundred and thirty-nine units across those four buildings. In kind of our initial review with engineering, fire department, uh, one of the comments, the fire department said is that for developments that have over two hundred units, you either need to have an enhanced fire suppression system or have two entrances onto a public road. So, um, actually just got a revised concept plan back today. The layout's very similar, but the, um, unit count is down to two hundred, um, to be able to, um, not have that two entrance requirement. There's still some ongoing review with the fire department for fire lane width, hydrant locations, hose length, um, distances, things like that. So, um, those will still be in the works and will be looked at before we get to the GDP stage. So that's kind of the main change. But Jeff, maybe if you want to just bring up kind of that, that updated plan. So, uh, the unit count changed in this version that I got this morning, but otherwise the layout, kind of the phasing, you know, buildings kind of moving counterclockwise along the building one is that, nope, it's the L-shaped building. And then two, three, four. On this version, there's no clubhouse or no sport courts, but kind of just a placeholder at this point with the concept plan. And I know they'd love to hear some feedback from you all on that. The other change here is that, um, the plan that's in the packet showed four different parcels, so one parcel for each, each building, but upon further review, you know, we have our, um, our street frontage requirements. And so we proposed a couple of different options, condo plat or, or subverting the properties a little differently. So right now, the, um, you can see kind of that pink line through the middle would be, um, kind of buildings one and four on one parcel and, um, two and three on the other to, to meet that requirement, but still have a lot of review to do with engineering, fire largely. But I'll hand it over to, to Jake to add anything else that I missed in your team and then, um, open it up for some feedback and questions.
All right, thanks, Elise. Jake Dome, Regency Development. Good to see you all again.
Ryan Quam, Quam Engineering.
Make sure you speak right into the microphones. It won't be picked up in the back. Awesome, thanks.
So, um, like Elise said, uh, last time we saw, we had the single parcel with a hundred and forty-two units on it. The main issue at that point was the easement. So upon acquiring the second parcel, uh, kind of opened up and eliminated that issue, which was, I think, kind of, uh, objective number one. So, uh, with the two, uh, parcels, we were kind of able to do a, a more spread out development. Uh, it's a lot less density per acre. Uh, we also took the buildings down to three stories instead of four. Uh, they're going to have pitched roofs though, so they'll still be a little bit taller, but it won't be quite as obstructing as like a four-story would be. Um, we also moved the driveway to the west side of the property so that we could kind of eliminate a lot of the traffic going by the neighbors there on the east side. We thought that that would be, uh, beneficial for kind of everyone there. It breaks the parking lot into a central location. And we'll eliminate noise and traffic lights and whatnot through there. I think with the layout of the buildings that we did, kind of circular around like that is the best possible shape that we can do for the stormwater management. All of these stormwater ponds, uh, have been modeled and we are, you know, ninety-five percent certain that's exactly what they're going to be. Like Elise kind of touched on for the fire, uh, still working through like a couple minor things that shouldn't be an issue as we kind of, uh, go through those. Uh, we did two different designs, one of the two hundred and thirty-nine units, um, and that, you know, included the clubhouse um, and some other sport courts that we didn't really get a whole lot of positive feedback from at the neighborhood meeting, uh, just for noise and whatnot, which is fine. But, you know, the, the things to consider, we can always kind of leave those open for, you know, future amenities at that time. But, uh, as far as the, the site plan goes, uh, we're here for your feedback in terms of what you guys think, uh, for what we did in developing something a little bit different.
Um, just going to have Jeff kind of scroll back to the packet, but look at some of the elevations for the side of the building too, just to kind of give you all a sense of the scale, um, with the three stories and a pitched roof here. There you go. Yeah, I think that was just kind of more the plan set utilities, so. Yeah, so I'll hand it over to you guys for, for comment.
Anybody? One's go first.
I'll, I'll just say I, I like what you've done with the site. I think it's a big improvement over your previous concepts. I'm curious if you have a reaction to the gentleman that spoke about the entrances.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We did kind of address that and I told him I'd look into it. Um, I, I did talk with Ryan, so that, I can let you talk a little bit about it, but.
Um, yeah, so initial thoughts are, yeah, we did look at it, um, and I do think I can, um, address the concerns with, um, some grading and some landscaping. I mean, one component that, this is just the concept plan level and obviously we're looking for, for feedback, but in the background, I'm also starting to prepare my mind and even, uh, frozen layers, like kind of the grading plan. You know, how are we going to get water to drain to the pond? How are we going to balance earthwork? How are we going to kind of match into property lines? So that number one is, uh, trying to get the, as much water to the ponds as possible so that they're as efficient as possible. And again, that, from a grading standpoint, and I did actually talk to the fire inspector a little bit about this specifically because, you know, can I put retaining walls? So like, the, the underground parking is obviously going to be kind of in a hole. And we'll have to have a pump to pump that water out. And then so behind that or on the, on the neighbor's side, we would have, um, some landscaping and as well as some elevation change. So it wouldn't be like lights right into the lower level. It'd be lights into a rock wall with, with landscaping on top of it as well as maybe even a berm on top of it. Cause there's, there's like, like fifty, sixty feet between the, um, the underground parking and, and the property line. So there's a lot we can do with that. But then the other aspect of it is, um, having a, a drive aisle going down to, to two buildings is more efficient. If I was to do what was recommended, we'd have to add one more drive aisle. So we'd have three under, three drive aisles to underground parking instead of two. I guess we have four actually, four, if you, if you zoom out a little bit. We already have three right now. So, but then we would have basically a fourth, which requires, you know, that takes away some green space and it requires more storm sewer that we can't manage as well and then it requires a pump as well, so. Um, and then, and then there's also just the space. I mean, there's, there's only forty feet between those buildings, so I'd have, we'd have to trim the buildings back like another twenty feet, whereas between these buildings, three and four, there's, there's like sixty feet of space already naturally. So those are the initial comments and I'm hoping we can show that we're going to, um, you know, landscape it and hide those lights.
I was surprised to see the handicap ramps. Is there that much elevation change?
Yeah, that's a good observation. So, um, again, we're trying to balance earthwork. What, what kind of sets the floor elevations is, is really the, the, the stormwater coming from Highway CC. There's a fairly flat pond. A fairly, fairly flat storm sewer that goes to a pond that's during large rain events, going to be like four or five feet deep. That five-foot depth kind of sets the, the, um, parking lot elevations. We want, we want to make sure that's just above the hundred or two hundred year event. And that puts us a little bit above the natural grade. So, you know, if, if we didn't have, if, if we were to raise, bring more fill, for instance, and, and raise that up and eliminate those, um, oh, and, and also, you know, we don't want to get into the groundwater either. So we, so there's a lot of, um, reasons for that, primarily stormwater getting above the groundwater and then also not having to truck in a whole bunch of fill. So that requires the, the, the cost of those switchbacks, but that cost is a lot less than a lot of fill.
Okay.
And then again, this is still, um, not, it's plummeting.
Conceptual.
It's still conceptual. I mean, this will be fleshed out when I get into the, the detailed grading plan and then we'll actually run an earthwork balance and and we, we'll probably adjust it further from there.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with the development. I think it's actually a good use of a piece of property that this size, you know, getting that number of units. And I think that you've done a nice layout. I think that your utility layout is really well done. I mean, it's about as efficient as you can get it. Stormwater is nice and clean. I, I would even go so far as to say, and I'm not concerned, I understand the concern about the headlights, but to your point, I think there's enough room back there to do a tremendous amount of things with landscaping berms or anything to, to mitigate that, that issue. I would even say that I think you could probably take those underground access points and tee them up more because bringing them in at a jog in a building is always complicated and teeing them up would probably put that access point to the apartment on the left away from a jog, but you know, that's, that's like detailed stuff.
And, and that, that brings up a good point. So Elise mentioned that we're having some hose lengths issues and it's that southwest corner. Again, this is a concept plan where the hose lengths were like two hundred and sixty-five feet instead of two hundred and fifty feet. So, um, when we come back for the, the GDP and the SIP, we would anticipate that that would be, that south edge of that building would be shifted forward like nor, uh, towards how we see, see like twenty feet. That would give us more room to work with for the landscape and it would also bring those gradures kind of east-west parallel to each other.
The other thing is, um, I think, have you looked at the radiuses for the, for the fire trucks? Because some of them seem a little tight because you're going to, you know, the voodoo. You're going to have to get your T in there for all of your fire department access because you're over a hundred and fifty feet and all that kind of stuff. So you'll have to, you may have to do some massaging of your, your dead ends a little bit too. My biggest, and so the, the aesthetics of the building, um, I think it's unfortunate that you're going to the hip roof, but I understand the reasons behind it. If you look at it, it's going to be taller than a four-story building by the time you get to that ridge point. So, um, I, I think it would be nice to actually go back to the flat roof, but that's a personal opinion. And I would also like to see a little bit more masonry, probably if you could, on the entry points. I'm a, I'm a firm believer in, um, trying to mitigate signage with architectural features so that you don't have to have a sign that says, "Come here, stupid." That kind of thing. So a little bit more masonry, I think, would help, um, on the entries or possibly even on the base of the building or something like that to carry it through. That's all I'm going to say on the architecture at this point. My biggest concern and hangup is two hundred units with one curb cut. I mean, that's flat out, that's, that's a concern for me. Um, we had a concern at a hundred and forty-four units with one curb cut. I don't know if this is a possibility, but is looking at the site plan, is Drumland Drive a private drive? Or would there be possible access to that?
There's, yeah, there's, it's all built out through there. There's, um.
Well, Drumland Drive comes in and then it goes to the back of those units. If you go to the site plan, the Google image.
Oh, I, oh, I know what you're saying. Okay, um, yeah, that's back in private drive. That's, uh, back near like Southport or South, yeah.
Sort of in the northeast corner.
Southport.
Go back to the, the color. Go back to the color site plan, uh, page seventeen.
Of the packet, okay.
Right there.
Yeah, this, so this is all private, um, from here north, this is all private drive.
That is, okay. My thought was that Drumland Drive, that access point right there up in the northeast corner, the L-shaped building. Nope, up further.
Up this one?
Drumland circle there.
You know, is that a possibility? But if that's all private drive, then that goes away.
Right.
So that to me is the elephant in the room. I'm just concerned about two hundred units and one curb cut.
Yeah, appreciate that. Yeah, unfortunately, right now, Dane County Highway doesn't want more than one on the road. I, it's my understanding you guys will have jurisdiction to that road.
Eventually.
Eventually.
Is there at least a right turn only? Is it a three-lane access?
Say that again?
Is it a three-lane entry access? So you've got a right turn in, a left turn and a right turn? Or can it be made into a three-lane access point to help flush out some of that traffic?
One end to it, so just like a, like a wider one almost.
Yeah, so add another lane to it for a right turn only.
That'd be a great idea.
Left turn, right turn.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Just have a one, one-lane entrance.
Yeah, we can look into that.
Yeah, right. Yeah, good idea.
Uh, one of my concerns is at that entry point, uh, you've got two, as you described them, holes going into the, the underground parking. Cars kind of in the wintertime need to scoot up that hill and
Can you talk, thank you.
Scoot out of there pretty quickly and you've got two hundred people using that driveway. Is that a, you know, safe intersection there with two underground parkings coming into a main, major entrance and exit point? Depending on the grade, it might be okay, but if, if you're dropping five, six feet in the ground there, it's probably going to be kind of dangerous. Also, generally, the trash collection is there and the trash truck hangs out of there when he's trying to load dumpsters and stuff. So definitely want to examine that, that interaction.
Building off of Scott's comment, you know, thinking about it, that if we've got one curb cut and two hundred units trying to exit at this point, is it wise to put those access points that close to the intersection? I understand that your grades are, are affecting some things, but if that western building access point could be flipped to the south side of that building? And if the access point to the build, the L-shaped building could be brought around to the south side of that building? Uh, not necessarily there, but I mean, right there.
Right there, yeah.
You know, your choice. That would at least help some of that frustration possibility of access points, so. I know it's voodoo that you got to do, so.
Yeah, from a grading standpoint and a stormwater standpoint, um, yeah, we talked about it for a while, but yeah, that unfortunately won't work. And, but I do know that, that, that north-south entrance grade is, I have that at a five percent or less. So it's actually ADA accessible from the, the public walkway. But I am, I, I'm going down slightly to get to the, um, kind of the T where the underground parking is, and then I'm climbing as fast as I can to kind of create a platform that will all drain to the, um, to the pond. But trying to introduce more dividing areas requires almost a hundred feet to get from the front door to the underground parking. Try to, try to put that in the middle of the site really disrupts that platform I was talking about. But for the good, the, to your point, uh, we are less than a five percent, um, for that, for that drive out. So I feel like that's pretty, um, safe.
How many percent are the entrances into the underground parking though? That's why I'm worried about cars having to scoot out of there so they don't slip on the hill and.
Yeah, I like to stay below ten percent. I mean, I've seen them steeper than that, but, um, set ten percent or less would be my goal and maybe even eight.
Anybody else?
Uh, my other comment was on the, and I'm sure this isn't set in stone yet. There's not a lot of stone on here. There's very, very little masonry shown. Was one of my comments, the building of this, this size and mass really needs to break up things a little more. You're showing two different colors of vinyl siding. Typically on buildings of this mass, we like to see higher quality finish than vinyl siding and certainly some more masonry accents and things.
Sure.
Yeah, uh, it definitely wouldn't be vinyl siding. There's a lot higher quality sidings that we're doing with MDF materials and whatnot. But, uh, and, and again, too, this is very conceptual. We didn't pour a whole lot into, uh, the siding and appearance just yet without even knowing if we have a project or not.
I don't see anybody saying that they're against this. I, I think it's probably a good use of the property. Correct?
Yeah.
So I guess we're asking you to work with us.
Yep, yeah, absolutely.
And you got some ideas now, so I think that's appropriate. Anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks.
You have any, you have any questions of us anymore?
Um, yeah, I guess it just in terms of like amenities, the pool, clubhouse, anything else you guys have feedback on that or?
My opinion is that if you've got two hundred units, you got to have something for people to do.
For sure.
I think it's kind of become the expectation, um, in apartments, uh, in this today's market to have things like that. Uh, whether or not it's a sport court or a swimming pool or something. But I certainly think that the clubhouse is something that is, is a benefit and would be used. The rest of the amenities, I guess you kind of maybe leave a placeholder and see what your, see what your users want to have or what you can, what you were comfortable putting in. Can't answer that, but I certainly think that amenities for a complex of two hundred units need something.
Yeah, and I think if we, if we did eliminate the clubhouse, what we would do is we would do like an office and a community room and a fitness center all within a building in lieu of just having the, the extra clubhouse, but, um, yeah, it's still kind of open. But yeah, other than that, no, no other questions.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thanks guys.
Thank you. Move on to, uh, seven B, which is for discussion only. Update on the new, uh, senior center planning process. The village is unrepresentative. Try North Builders.
Come on down, Pat. Village, not city.
So I've got a deal, if you keep tallies of how often I mess that up, I'll do some kind of penance later.
Okay.
I have a real problem referring to municipalities as villages, apparently.
Oh, city.
No, I have, the, the problem is saying city.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm going to do my best. I've been working on it, so we'll see. Good evening. Thank you for having me. Um, this has been an exciting project for us. My architect can't be here tonight. He lives in the village. I have kids in the district, so this is a very exciting project.
And of course, I'm going to ask you for your name.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm out of practice. Patrick Stern, Try North Builders.
Okay, thank you.
Do you guys do addresses? Do you want my, I, I do that.
Sure.
Two-two-six-five Kane Road in Pittsburgh.
Okay.
So, uh, this last fall, you guys sent out a RFP for services to sort of owners rep with you guys to figure out what to do on the senior center. We went through. Senior Center. Um, we went through a, a pretty exhaustive process of question and answer back and forth on it. Um, it's an interesting site for certain and um, we've been working with Rachel, Elise, Jeff, Martin. And um, some other folks too on staff to kinda come through. Um, if you look at.
I forgot about the PowerPoint.
That's okay. I'm just stalling for time a little bit, guys, sorry. So um, we've kinda put together this, this quick deck to kinda show where we're at and get feedback on the process so far. So I'm comfortable if you guys wanna just shout questions at me, uh, whenever you got them. I'm happy to do it that way or save it to the end. Um, you can keep going past this one. So sort of where we're at here, this is sort of our, our, our phasing of this, right? So phase one was sitting down with Rachel and, and Andrew, our architect, to kinda really go through and say, okay, what are the programatics? What are, you know, typical um, best practice space uses? Um, then we took that sort of document, which is in a slide coming up and, and looked at that on the site and how that fits. Sort of in a more, very general way. Obviously, we're not diving into the architecture. We're just kinda saying what can this site support and what does it look like in general terms? So then once we bring an architect on board. We can kinda give them some direction. Uh, so we're at phase three right now, hoping to get feedback from, you know, boards and move into phase four rather. Quickly here to kinda get um, feedback from the community at large on what we didn't think of, obviously, and incorporate that into the plan. And then, you know, move forward with design and construction. So um. Rachel, do you wanna talk a little bit about how we did this last time or you want me to just kinda take it?
So the senior center is in the old Paul's Grocery Store and it hasn't been remodeled in a very long time. And it's no longer really worth remodeling at this stage. It's a, lived a very long life. Um, so we tried to figure out um, what the senior center, what, what functions it serves within the community. What the demographics are going to be of the people that are served by the senior center in the future. Um, and we broke down the uses into several categories which are listed there on that slide. Um, and considered, how are we using spaces now? What have we learned in the last several years from a variety of experiences that we've had? Some very unwelcome, like the pandemic. Um, and what do we see those spaces needing to look like in the future? And Patrick, I can't remember if I'm supposed to say anything else here or not.
I can add a few things. So the first kind of five items there are senior center. Current uses and kind of expanded, what do we think we could, could do? So for example, the licensed adult day program right now is just a half day. Um, three days a week, but with a new building would be great to be able to provide a service to the community that offers a space that can have full day, five day a week. Um, adult day use um, and have, that includes like a room that's kind of a. A resting room, kind of a naptime room with recliners and stuff and um, it's a big need in the community. And there are very few licensed adult day programs within the county. Um, so that could also be, you know, filling a need and a um, an income source potentially too. For the senior center. The other two points on there, parking and community impact. So um, one thing we looked at with this was. Um, parking is kind of the necessary evil with the projects like this. It's the first impression um, that seniors have. Uh, coming up to the building and if it feels at all unwelcoming, unsafe, confusing, um. They're probably gonna pass on by or that's gonna kinda be that first impression. So we did meet with um, a gentleman who is. A, very briefly, but he's a um, senior center kind of specialist and architect who um, consults with projects all over the country. And he gave us a lot of best practice numbers and, and feedback, but one thing was about parking and kinda layout. He said, you know, you kinda wanna design this like a Costco parking lot where big wide spaces, it's ea, you know, there's um. Very few kinda crossing points from a parking to an entrance, making it very user friendly. Um, so that did have an impact on kind of how much space the, the parking ended up taking up on the site. Um, so we, we'll show that on some of the future slides, but we also had kind of the idea that this parking lot could serve as sort of the major. Downtown municipal parking lot for future projects. You know, we'll talk about this later in the agenda, but we are gonna embark on this downtown. Master plan next year and looking at what are the parking needs and how do we wanna reuse, um, you know, Old Village Hall, what's the future of the, the. Fire station, Triangle Park, downtown parking needs, um, and perhaps this could kind of serve as a major downtown parking. Function. Um, and then community impact, the community gym was another major piece of this and um. Could serve the senior center during the daytime, so walking track around the gym, ability to have, you know, zumba. Indoor pickleball, line dancing, whatever that may be. And then in off hours, have available for the community. And that's one thing we heard from our park plan is that people are really wanting to see those indoor um, rec spaces provided by the village. And we need to kinda suss out a little bit more about what does that actually mean and what type of equipment and hours and things like that. But that's kind of the community impact um, bullet point on here.
Yeah, and I guess backing up a step, the first thing that we did through this process was, okay, what does the ideal senior center look like? So that was the, the number one goal, right? So let's look at that, analyze that and then, then move on to the site past that. So that's where we're getting into some of the, that community impact. Um, we spent an awful lot of time looking at a couple of options where. How do we, is there space left over for co-development or anything else on the site? And we'll get into reasons why not, but just keep that in the back of your mind as well as we get to the next slide for sort of what we said. And I mean, we can dive into this and we can have, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer and it's very small right now, but you know, that's just sort of, you know. What is the literal space needed for any of these sorts of, of things, right? So offices at, you know, between a hundred and twenty and two hundred square feet, gift shop, you know, we just, we went through, what's the best practice, right? Obviously, this is not an exact number for when an architect gets in here and, you know, you're placing hallways and stuff, so it's gonna morph a little bit. But it's just to kinda show, okay, what's the scale of building that we need? And the interesting thing is in the state of Wisconsin, in the last twenty years, there really hasn't been any ground up senior center construction. So there's not a lot of precedent to go by here. Um, there has been nationwide and obviously that's why we reached out to somebody who was. Very helpful and charged no money for his advice. Um, because it's just not a common thing here. So this is sort of a very interesting and, and unique project that you guys are undertaking. And when we ran into Pittsburgh Senior Center Director at a, at a talk just the other day. I mean, she was jealous of the idea, cause this is the project that she said she wanted to do when she took over, but we didn't let her.
You in particular.
Me in particular, yes. Um, so ultimately, at the end of the day, it's about a thirty-one thousand square foot building um, with the community gym. Uh, one of the things that we, you know, talked to the board about and, and they were supportive of at the time, um. That community gym, if you take that out, obviously there's things that have to get replaced, um, like the walking track and like a more space for zumba. So you're not gonna save the full size of that community gym, you're just gonna save a little bit of it. Um, but yeah, to Elise's point, like parking was a huge deal, right? It has to be um, intuitively navigable. It has to be, you know, wider. It has to feel welcoming. Um, again, none of those crossings as, or as few crossings as you can do. Um, so obviously that created a, a, a bigger portion of the project and, and that's sort of where. That sort of co-development died a little bit, right? Where it all of a sudden, we're looking at what's left and it was so small as to not really be important. And then you're muddying the site a little bit, right? With who's using what space and how are we going to do it? Um, for comparison, um, this is roughly the same size as, as your library that's being built. But the library lot is obviously three times as large as this one. So there are literal site constraints to what we're kinda looking at. Um, but obviously there's very good reasons to keep the senior center downtown, um, from a staff perspective. I mean, that was the feedback we got, that it's not, there's no reason to look anywhere else. It's just, this is sort of a once in a generation opportunity to combine these lots together. And do something interesting. Um, but yeah, I think everyone's been down there, right? It's not, it's not an easy site. I mean, we have, as a history as a company, so Try North built the post office in the nineteen eighties. I mean, we're aware of, you know, water table issues, right? So it's not like we can park underground there, um, very cost effectively. Uh, you can do anything for any amount of money you want to. Um, but yeah, so it's, it's an interesting project for sure.
Yeah, I think the other thing, well, once we get to the site too, we can talk about why we talked, wanted to site the building on the corner.
Yes.
That we did.
Yeah, I mean, so if you look at. This one, so this is sort of our first sort of block diagram of what could possibly be the shape and, and placement. Um, so for this one, if you. Under that, um, that lower left corner is where the current senior center is. Um, and depending on how you phase the construction, if, if that does indeed end up being the, the endpoint of where the building goes. You can leave the current senior center open during construction, do parking last and, and really maintain services. That are pretty critical often. Um. Yeah, and obviously there, we're having some discussions with neighboring properties, right? Cause this is again, once in a generation, now's the time to look and ask the questions. And I think you can maybe cover that.
Um, so this part, early on this process, did reach out to the other users on this block just to see if it's an opportunity again, once in generation. To try to bring in properties um, here and no one is willing to, or interested in moving at this time. Uh, the, the one bit of progress I did get is uh, that grassy lot that Jeff was kinda circling before is owned by the bowling alley. There's actually three parcels that they own. That is its own parcel. It's just kinda this grassy lot, not really used a whole lot except for, you know, maybe cornhole. Tournament during summer fest, um, but was able to touch base with the property owner there. Um. And she is willing to kind of further discussions, whether that's the village doing a, a land lease or buying that property for them. We haven't really talked about any numbers, but we did get permission. We did a phase one um, environmental site assessment on the properties. Including that one as well as an ALTA survey. So those are not in the packet, cause they're very long, but um, if you'd like to see them, let me know. Uh, so we did include that property and, and did a little bit of diligence just to make sure there's no buried tanks or anything under there. And actually, I don't think anything has ever been built there in the modern history of Oregon. Um, we went back pretty far in the title work and, and nothing came up. So uh, that could be another opportunity to have a, either a drive or pedestrian connection to Spring Street, maybe some additional parking. Uh, this one hundred and fourteen stalls is kind of a, obviously a placeholder at this point, but I think that's using the best practice number. Based on the square footage of the building from this senior center um, kinda design consultant. Um, there is obviously a lot of on-street parking nearby and I think that's something that would probably be used during construction. Especially if it's phased here where we're building a parking lot while the, the senior center kinda shifts over. Um, and that's definitely, you know, could be used for a lot of the users, but we have to keep in mind that a lot of those folks. As close to the building, as close to the entrance as possible is gonna be extremely important for them. Uh, there's also two entrance points on this building. Do you want me to talk about that or?
I can take that a little bit, so.
Well, actually, three, three entrance.
So community gym, the idea being you could enter it off hours, not through the main area so that you can keep secure, right? Cause there's obviously personal files and, you know, HIPAA and, you know, especially if the adult daycare goes to an all-day program. There's really a need for a separation there. Um, but also in talking about how. What the future sort of senior center work includes, I mean, food service is a big part of it, right? The village experienced disruption this winter. Um, the county's recommendation is that it be a full production kitchen for any senior center that's being built going forward. So where Jeff has the, had the mouse there, that little um, circle, the idea being that's sort of your logistical drop-off point for your raw foods. To get processed and turned into meals. Um, then you'd have a main entrance, which is that little uh, drive that has a. Porcha share or covered entry um, sort of shown right now, um, which would be wherever all the people would come. Again, you'd want that again, very easily used and intuitive and you have to do it so that you're doing the correct right turns. Um, but then yes, that community gym would have its own entrance so that off hours, whether it's a rec person or somebody who, whoever's running classes can. Get people in and out without disturbing the rest of the space.
And the other thing I was gonna add on kinda that service entrance on the east side of the site is that that would also be kind of a volunteer.
Right.
Um, you know, for meal delivery, pull up and uh, possibly even have a, a covered interior entrance where you could come in and. Um, you know, get out of the weather, load up your car with meals, uh, also lone closet, things like that when equipment's being um, you know, loaded up into a car. Have a, a bit of a covered entrance over there as well.
So then obviously part of our service is to kinda say, okay, what is this gonna cost? So we did a full, to kinda take off of, of numbers based on our history and, and talking with a few of our subcontractors. So you know, that's rough order of magnitude, not rough order of magnitude, like we can, we, we can tell you with certainty, if you wrote a check to a contract, well. I wouldn't pre, prepay them, but if you wrote that check to a contractor today, the building that we've shown can get completed. Um, I, I pulled out design just to make sure that you guys all knew everything, that is everything, right? We even put furniture, so that is a complete building done. Um, and eight hundred thousand for contingency, cause obviously it's not getting done today. And as the plan commission, I'm sure you're all aware, construction prices don't tend to go down uh, in my lifetime. So that's obviously like a built-in unknowns plus, you know, price acceleration sort of fund, for lack of a better term. Um, the nice thing is in talking to Martin, you're not too far off from that in your CIP anyway. So it's um, kinda fits with the scope of what the village was expecting. So yeah, so then, you know, going on from here, right, we're presenting to you and other boards to get feedback on what. You know, the initial sort of steps have been. Um, then, once we've sort of, along with the, the public input. We'll put together a, a real final report on all of this, just to kind of again, be able to hand off to designers and have for your records of how this process went. Um, obviously, public input is gonna be a big part and we've started to sort of design that program. I don't know that we're ready quite to talk about that in depth, or do you wanna talk?
I think there'll be probably more of a board discussion later in the month.
So we're designing how we wanna do that right now. Then obviously there's actual design, which will hopefully be the fun part for you guys. Um, and hopefully construction, you don't have to worry about too much, that it goes smoothly and then opening. Sort of where we are today. Um, did I miss anything? Do you guys have questions?
Maybe if you could toggle back to the um, packet, then we can zoom in a little more to the, the program plan. But um, just I guess wanted to bring you guys up to speed on what the board heard. Um, late September is pretty much the same presentation. But where we were with the, the ownership, you know, the site due diligence process and some conceptual design. Um, obviously this is gonna kinda be, this is a jumping off point, but um, I know in the past we've talked about. You know, a mixed-use building with a senior center below and multi-family housing and, you know, before we get too far down the road of engaging the community and kind of all buy into this. Standalone senior center, I wanted to make sure that you all felt that you understood kind of why we ended up here. Um, a lot of it was the site, you know, it constraints itself with the water table and other things. It just makes it more difficult, more expensive to build a multi-story building. Um, but there's also the loss of autonomy over our own space. So when you have, you know, senior housing above or, or whatnot, sort of the perception that this isn't a community space open to everybody. But this is for people that live in this building as well as sort of people that live in the building, having a different relationship with the, the senior center than maybe. The rest of um, the community would. We also, um, you know, there's competing needs for parking. Um, you know, we were trying to figure out, okay, how would we put, we put the building in the middle and have, you know, apartment parking on one side and the senior center on the other. The senior center wants to be a one-story building just from safety, functionality, staffing, um, flow of people, all of that. So um, we did eventually think, well, maybe this is two separate projects and let's try to, I think we, it was at southern end of the site. We had about a hundred foot wide um, block there that we were holding for, well, we'll sell this site and then somebody else can do that. But really, once we learned more about the parking and then also some of the feedback from the architect was about circulation. So wider hallways, more bathrooms, things like that. The, the building footprint grew enough that it really didn't make sense anymore. It kinda kept shrinking and then we realized that, is this really gonna, you know, gain the village anything in ter, you know, financially? And also, will this project really, you know, be beneficial enough? Maybe the site doesn't need to be everything for every project. But it's looking at opportunities, you know, downtown as a whole to try to do redevelopment to fit in.
We spent a very long time trying to figure out, is there a co-use? And I, we probably spent too much time and energy and effort thinking about that. Cause that was sort of where we started our, the thinking. Because that was sort of where we started our the thinking. Um, but yeah, with a hundred feet on that site, right, then you're shrinking all the parking for seniors, so you're limiting its attractiveness as a use. Plus, you have to figure out, again, are you gonna. Once you got to that point, is it, are you getting much return for that when you sell the land? So there was a a big thing of like, let's just focus on making this prod, the one project that we know we're gonna do, the senior center. The best project we can and not hamstring it by doing two okay projects. We just wanted one great one. Sort of how we ended up the thought process during that discussion, because we spent. A lot of months still trying to get.
And then placement on the corner, that was really driven by just trying not to move the senior center twice, the temporary. Relocation of the senior center, uh, you know, I don't want to take years off of Rachel's life trying to figure out how to do that and the cost to do that. Um, so that kind of drove that location and obviously curb cuts and access points. All for future discussion, that that bowling alley parcel too, pulling that in, but. Um, any other, I guess, thoughts or direction on kind of just this concept? Plan or thoughts on community engagement, um, you know, questions you'd like to hear asked of the community, so we really make sure that we're. You know, kind of be as thorough as we can in this planning process.
Just a few comments on it. Um, first off, when I saw the price tag, I kind of fell over. It's a lot of money for the community, so in this facility, it really needs to be a community facility and not a day-use. Senior center, so looking for ways to involve. Um, other aspects of the community will help sell that price tag. It doesn't sound like you have a lot of comparables. I was curious what other communities' sizes of of senior set of uh centers were like.
Yeah, so like if you look, I mean, my history in Pittsburgh, you know, they built a community center and they added essentially senior services as kind of half of that. Um, that seems to be the typical model, so there's not a good, just kind of standalone, this is just the senior center. I mean, there've been a couple of them. But it's not very common. It's either we're reusing an old building or mu- city hall's moving and we'll let the senior center go in there, so there's a lot of remodels. But the ground ups, there really is not a comparable that I can give you unfortunately in the state of Wisconsin. Like, if I go to Kansas, I can, but.
Okay, the the logic of how you derive the site placement makes sense. I like the idea of not having to relocate. Um, there's an advantage to that placement too, in that you've got significant southern and western exposure, so. I would hope the architects would really take that into account in the fenestration, bringing in a lot of sunlight. Uh, would be a great option. The one concern I have is you've got a lot of hard surface on that site, and so what happens with all that runoff?
So we did talk about that. The one thing is that site, we're not adding any hard surface really, and we're just replacing it with hard surface in the. In a different configuration than it is now. If anything, we are adding a little bit more green space. I know it's not significant, but. Um, it is a little bit. But it's that trade-off again between, okay, making that parking really. Making it an attractive senior destination. So I think there's some things, once we get into design, that we can talk about for how we do that, because I know we've had a lot of conversations about just incorporating more green space in general into the senior center. And how we do that, and maybe there's a shift with talking to the bowling alley people and how we do some of that, so we gain some more green. Um, so that's by no means a final decision. Again, this is just, we're putting the box on the on the thing. We're not getting into the design yet, but. I mean, it's a well-taken point for sure.
Is this something that would have to go out to referendum in the community or is this budgeted for?
Don't believe this requires a referendum.
Project, yep, but it would go through the village board, obviously, for the borrowing.
Yep, but currently in the CIP, I think across. Three to four years, including design and construction. Um, borrowing, I think it's three years, right?
So the arrangement with Tri-North is that the village is entering to an agreement with them. To go through this process of. Site uh prep or or site selection, or we had the site, um, building design. Going out for bids, I suspect Tri-North to be the general contractor more than likely.
So. Or a structure manager. We would not do either, as our agreement is just as owner's representation, we're not, we're not. I shouldn't say loud, but that, because that's not, I'm not worried about that, but it, we're not, um.
It's not in the scope of this current work, right?
Services, so really, so it's essentially more like a Jeff, the Jeff Vine on the library than a G C or a C M.
Right, right. Just wanted to know. I used to be a contractor.
Sure.
So I I agree with Patrick. I think the building placement itself is where I would have probably put it, even if it were a flat piece of. Green grass. Um, it's the most interesting and dynamic location. What I'm, what I'm struggling with is, um. You had made a comment about trying to get parking as close as possible to the building, yet there are two single-loaded parking aisles. And um, the big, one of the biggest ones on the south side of the property is double-loaded, but it puts all of the parking. Farthest away from the building, so, um. It it's the age-old problem. You've you've got a piece of property and you're trying to fit twelve pounds of stuff into a ten-pound bag. So, um, I'm not convinced that a one-story building is the most appropriate solution, especially since the community gym itself. Is not going to be a ten-foot ceiling. You know, it's going to be a two-story space. It seems to me that the senior center could easily take that program and shift it into a two-story building and make use of that height. Which would then free up more real estate to put parking, to put green space. Elevators aren't that much more expensive in the grand scheme of things. And there isn't a clinic being built these days that's not at least tours, two stories tall.
I challenge you on that one a little bit, so the new hospital that was just built in Pittsburgh, um, the rehab hospital, it's actually, it's just faux. Story and a half. It's just all one story. And it's, that's actually becoming more typical again, especially when you're dealing with older patients, so one of the thing.
Feet is that clinic?
Oh, uh, seventy-ish thousand?
Seventy thousand on a single square.
Encompass health, right there on Fishtechery and uh. Just up the hill from you guys.
Yeah, they have the most retention ponds I've ever seen in my life, like on every, everywhere.
I I challenge you to take a look at two stories. If you're, if we're trying to, if we're trying to put a lot of stuff into a site, height. Is your, is your friend.
Yeah, the other thing that I would say though is so the association of like senior center directors, they have some guidelines on this. So if you separate the offices out, which would be the easy call, right? Like, let's put all like the offices on a second floor, because then it's seniors don't have to go up and down to do things. One of the things that they say is obviously as people are getting older, if you're not having people who have direct view into what's happening in those spaces. And you have injuries, they worry about having that span, what I call span of control, right? So you can see what's happening in the in the facility from your staff. So you can react to slips and falls. Um, so it is something that, it's obviously an ongoing thing. There's no way to say we're, it's for sure what what it is today. It's just, there's a lot of guidance that says you do really want a senior center on one floor with staff there.
That's fair, and I'm not gonna get into the program.
Yeah.
Aspects of it. I mean, even three thousand square feet mezzanine to take the office and put it on the second floor is three thousand square feet of real estate. That you now have something to do with. Um, so I I think that you can certainly do something to um shrink the footprint a little bit.
Yeah.
Whatever that is, um, and that may help you with some of the footprint or some of the site constraints that you're working with here.
Um, the other thing about parking that I'll just say is again, we just sort of laid out the simplest way that we do one hundred and fourteen for this one.
I get it, and this is a sixty thousand foot, so you're kind of getting.
I totally get it. One of the things that they actually recommended is doing uh walk paths in front of both cars. So that, and we didn't show that here at all, right? So then you would have to reconfigure everything to get that path to go that way. Sort of like at the Target, right, where you've got those sidewalks that run.
Some of the runs of the parking are seem to be long. I mean, you're gonna have to have light poles in there someplace, so to put an island in there. Maybe your friend to to do some of those things. Um, truck traffic is something that crossed my mind, you know, as this community grows and as the need for the food service increases. Um, something bigger than like a panel van is gonna probably have to be dropping off and picking up produce and product. Um, so that's something that needs to be brought up, and of course, as this continues to expand and grow, trash is something that's gonna happen. And again, I get it. This is the big picture stuff, but there are things that are gonna play into your site layout and site design as you move into this. What else do I have? I think that's pretty much like the big, bigger items. But um, a lot of that stuff will be kind of flushed out too, as you get into the more architectural programmatic things.
Right.
Um, but the big story, I guess, for me is I like the location. I think that you're going down the right path. Um, but I think that you you might want to try to, and I completely agree with not putting underground parking. I get it. I mean, you could do it. It has been done. You don't want to do it.
You can spend enough money to do anything you want to do.
Yep. Um, so, um, yeah, that's it.
Anybody else?
Is there anything to do with Waterman Street there?
I'd just like to say that I too like the the layout of it and and. It will do wonders for the, what we have down there at this point in time, and. It's all been a matter of time and development as things move, and this is a nice time to be able to pull those lots together. I know, uh, parking is a big thing and that, uh. In the overall planning of our downtown area, we haven't dealt much about doing parking ramps, but, uh. Uh, I don't know, maybe there's some, some, has been some thought and energy put into that, but I was curious to know that.
Yeah, I could see that maybe kind of tie in with our our downtown master plan that we're gonna talk about next and what are the needs, um, you know. Back to the site, obviously, one fourteen is just kind of, that's the recommended number based on the square footage, but I think we have to kind of. At some point decide, well, how much of this nearby on-street parking, do we want to kind of have serve this building? Maybe that's where. Staff, more able-bodied users of the building are parking, um, how do we tie kind of all these things in together? Parking garage, obviously, is extremely expensive, but if that's the direction that, you know, we decide that's the best use of space. Um, there's other small communities that have parking garages and, um. You know, just kind of figuring out where we want to dedicate that space and those funds, but yeah, I I could definitely see overall parking. Needs and location downtown being a big point in that downtown planning, which will inform this project as well. Kind of time timelines will line up.
All right, thank you. Eric, you have a comment?
I was just looking at Waterman Street. There is an opportunity. It's, there are probably not a lot of traffic there when the library goes away. And I don't know if that can turn into one-way with angled parking to add some space or.
We have, we've actually considered even, um, taking that street out. Uh, the the, um, the interesting thing is though, if if we do like. Uh, what do they call it? Discontinue the right of way, vacate the right of way. We only vacate, we only get a half. The other half goes to the other adjacent property owners.
Yeah.
So you gain about thirty-three feet, which is something, but, um, yeah, I think it's, it's not off the table.
Yeah, we, uh, that was something that was thrown around during discussions, and obviously in the plan, we're not showing that yet, but yes, do do we do angled parking or. Something else? Again, how do we buy back a little bit of the of that green space?
Okay.
One more thing that I'll throw out is that if you are able to create more parking, you know, I know that we're kind of hand, we're kind of tied with the. Um, parking requirements that have been given to us, um, a few years ago. If you were looking to or are able to add more parking stalls, I think this would be the perfect venue to put in. Previous pavement, um, uh, something that. It's not, I'm not a fan of it either, but it would be a perfect location and opportunity to try some of that on a few of those stalls.
We have that in our office building, actually quite a bit of it, and it's, it is a nice one, and ADA actually recommends it because the ice melts much faster. The problem is the maintenance, right? Where you're scraping it with the snow anyway, so we've got pebbles everywhere. Um, obviously, that's a a village sort of d- direction decision. I I don't disagree with you necessarily, depending on where, like maybe. Part particularly on the lower-use area, like maybe we're that sort of.
Parking.
Staff parking or the the bowling alley area. But yeah, it's.
Or if it's above and above the standard count.
Yeah. We are above the standard count. We initially proposed just, you know, sort of what your zoning requires and it. We were told kind of point-blank, like, not anywhere near enough what you need.
Yeah, I think it was what previous surgery was.
Six or.
Yeah.
Somewhere in that range, we were down two, not a huge number less, but obviously, when you're, when you're doing the Cadillac spots, every spot counts.
Okay. Onward.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's my tally?
You did good.
Oh, I'm kidding.
Yeah, you don't owe me any money.
Okay, item seven C for discussion only, a review of two thousand twenty-four downtown master plan.
Okay, as sorry, listen to me talk a lot tonight. Um, so as previously mentioned, um, in our. CIP, um, for the board that's been approved for next year, um, we've requested funds to do a downtown master plan. Um, a lot of this has been just kind of predicated on all the changes that have happened downtown, the location, relocation of the library, village hall. Post office, um, since our last plans, you know, the youth center, um, other. Public buildings have found a home, and so, um, civic campus plan, I think, was the latest one we did, that was twenty eighteen. And a lot of that is outdated at this point. Um, there's also, now we're sitting with a, an empty old village hall. A fire station that needs to either expand or relocate and rebuild. Um, and then, um, a lot of push in our comp plan that we heard from the community that we want to have a a dense, walkable. Active, vibrant downtown. We want to have more events and activities. We want to have the ability to, um. You know, have more festivals and concerts and things like that and figuring out, okay, well, what's the best spot for that? Do we want to continue to, you know, invest in Waterman Triangle Park and expand that, um, back to maybe the larger footprint that it had. In the past, um, how much of that parking do we want to retain versus maybe have at the senior center or other lots to serve, you know. Evening events, um, so it seemed like a good time for this master plan because a lot of these other, you know. Future building projects, vacant buildings are kind of are waiting on on answers before we can really decide what to do with them next, so. Um, the board is asked to kind of start moving this process along, um. In as as soon as we can, um, so the approximate timeline is provided below, kind of in that, um. That diagram there, so through the end of this year, establishing a scope, drafting RFP, and then getting final approval from the village board. Um, looking probably January to publish and advertise the RFP after the holidays. Um, interview finalists by a panel, um, hopefully have some planning commissioners on that. Um, and then contracting and then probably a spring-through-fall type process. Um, also. Really hoping in this that we can do a lot more kind of hands-on community engagement, so downtown. Um, you know, kind of mobile listening sessions, let's walk around downtown and actually look at places versus, you know, have everybody come all the way out here to the community room. Um, you know, maybe different, it's called tactical urbanism, but let's, you know, let's shut down a street for a little while and. Or shut down the parking lot and, you know, have an event and see what does this feel like to have different spaces used in a different way. Um, also need to get some space needs from, you know, the fire station, if expanding downtown makes the most sense. Um, what does that footprint look like? Where does that go? How does it impact other spaces? Um, so that would all kind of happen during that spring-through-fall timeframe, and then hopefully by this time next year, sooner, we would have. An updated downtown master plan, so, um, my questions for you on the next page are pretty broad, um, but as. Um, we're drafting this RFP, um, you know, what questions as a planning commission would you like to address during the downtown master plan process? Uh, what do you think should be the extent, the physical kind of extent of downtown, um, studied? And then how would you like to be kind of involved in the process, whether from choosing a firm and thinking, you know. Um, we would do an RFP, so certainly Vandal Wall could, um, respond, but maybe putting this out to somebody with more, um. Landscape architecture, urban design experience as well. Um, so, you know, would you like to be involved in the selection process and then kind of engage in the community, working on. You know, concept layouts for the downtown public spaces, um. You know, we'd just love to hear your thoughts on these, these three questions and anything else that comes to mind.
Somebody's got to speak first, not me.
I have three answers to your question.
Okay, I'm ready.
Um, I like what you're saying about doing some walking tours and getting. Um, I like what you're saying about doing some walking tours and getting out. I think that's, that's pretty interesting. Uh, what I had written down is something that I think is very important is, is examining pedestrian safety as part of that plan. So that's something that, that, uh, I'm interested in. Uh, I'm not sure where your borders are, but what I think is important is to look at the entrance corridors. So how Jefferson, North Main, uh, all, all those streets feed into downtown. I think that's something that should be, if possible, studied and included in, in that plan. I think obviously Grove Street is probably your northern border. Um, you know, the railroad crossing is probably your western border and then I'm not sure where that eastern border ends up. Uh, but I would hope they would look further into those entrance corridors. I think there's a lot we could do as a community, uh, to be more inviting, um, more traditional trees, tree-lined streets like communities used to have. Uh, things like that. Um, as far as being involved, I thought the comprehensive plan process, or I think it is working really well. I think the feedback opportunities that we've had have been very good. So I just wrote similar to that process.
Kind of review of drafts.
Right, having, you know, three, three drafts to review or however many drafts, but you know, you just opened up my eyes to something else, you know, a walking tour and, and more, uh, onsite type analysis, I think would be really interesting.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I went to a conference this fall and they were talking about, um, often in like comp plan, we had focus groups and it kind of sounds sort of science-y, you know, like let's come study and, you know. Um, so they, they recommend calling them listening sessions, but there was an example they shared with sort of a mobile listening session. So doing really small groups, trying to keep it, you know, less than six to eight people and have, you know, volunteers, staff consultants sort of leading the walking tour, maybe somebody else along, taking notes, but stopping at various points and, you know, talking about how did it feel to cross this intersection and you know, what are some ideas to improve it or, you know, how, how would you envision, you know, a redesign of this space, but actually kind of boots on the ground? Um, being pretty helpful, especially because this is such a small area. We really want to, um, you know, make sure we're getting relevant feedback. But yeah, glad that you're thinking along the same lines.
Years ago, I don't remember, eight, ten years ago, we did a tour with Vandoval. Um, and that was really helpful, I think, in looking at different development processes and
In other communities.
In other communities. And so, you know, if there's some downtowns that are worthy of looking at, it doesn't necessarily need to be a bus tour. We could meet, you know, at those communities. Um, that, that was helpful.
Yeah, great.
I think it'd help, be helpful to have some involvement from the business community in town and neighboring communities because we're not going to have a hundred percent civic campus. So if we're gonna plan something, it should be something that the community would support from a development standpoint as well as, you know, what the people want to see. I mean, residents can ask for a lot of things, but if people aren't, if it doesn't make business sense, people aren't going to do it. Have that input as well.
Some of the things that I wrote down were, one thing that I've always found really appealing about the downtown is that there was this really sort of attractive connection between the schools and the downtown business, um, civic aspects with the green space. Um, we've got this really beautiful park system, um, tying into the ball diamonds, tying into the schools and it connected the downtown with that. And I thought that was really powerful and I'd like to cease that kind of carried through in some of the, uh, master plan ideas. Um, how do we maintain that connection, knowing that most of the civic practices have moved out of the downtown or will move out of the downtown? Um, but I still think that that could be replaced with a business and, and some parking aspects to keep this sort of downtown excited and vibrant so that there is still that nice connection with the downtown. Um, how do we foster community in this whole process? How do we, what do we do at the old village hall, you know?
Another question.
Yeah, is it a tear down? Do we, do we propose business? Do we propose expansion of, of, uh, you know, what, what is it? You know, how do we, what are the options? Um, and then how do we promote a vibrant downtown for the business community to develop in? I think Patrick's done a nice job of sort of describing the extents of the downtown. I don't know if there's anything magical really about that. Um, and, um, I agree with him completely about the entrance points and the um, continuing sort of what we've got going here. You know, there's something, something nice about that.
Thank you.
There's been a lot of good points made and, uh, one that's, uh, that hasn't been tonight, but has been before is the need to be able to manage bike traffic in and out and a place to park for them that's inviting and easy and, you know, people aren't worrying about them getting stolen or wrecked.
All right.
Thanks.
I would, uh, somewhat challenge the extent of downtown, um, in not confining that too much. Um, I grew up in downtown, uh, many, many decades ago and I still like, like it downtown, but, uh, you know, with the, the schools kind of on the north end and the parks and the police and court buildings and there, there are still our civic functions down there and I think you know, the couple of square blocks that we might think of more as the downtown where the businesses are is certainly downtown, but I think the surrounding walkable area is really part of downtown and it should be kind of considered into that. There are some areas of downtown that, you know, at some point in the future would be, you know, possible for redevelopment and and, you know, work more into the downtown model as well. So I think that the boundary should probably be bumped out a little ways and just, just for future planning purposes.
Anybody else? That covered quite a bit. I, I, I was interested when I, when Patrick was talking about the, I was going through my mind in all the different directions and seeing that, you know, there's actually quite a bit there and I guess like Scott was just saying that we can't look at just what's there right now is the, the, the business here. There's other areas that can be redeveloped.
Right. What could be?
What could be? I understand that there's some beautiful homes and all this kind of stuff, but or older buildings that are being occupied at this time in other business, businesses. But there's also things in the future we can look at. So it's, yes, it'd be nice to continue because it is a nice little area. It's, it's, I'm, I'm interested, I'm interested, I'm surprised when it comes down here sometimes how busy this downtown really is in the summer. It's pretty impressive. So, okay, anything else? Thank you, Elise.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item, uh, seven D Delta. Site plan revision for Omni Technologies Building at nine hundred Oregon Center Drive. Applicant is KSW Construction and Omni Technologies.
Hello?
All right, you can take it away, Chris.
Uh, I'm Chris Allen, thirteen nineteen Jennifer Street, Madison. Uh, on a scale of one to ten, the complication of this project is about a one. It's a, an expansion of an existing building right down the block here, Omni Technologies. Uh, they're growing out of their current space. Uh, they need to add approximately, uh, just under five thousand square feet of warehouse space to the east end of their building.
Okay.
Um, we got the go-ahead already to do in their ex- existing warehouse. We've already started building out like three additional office spaces. They just don't have enough room for their people in the, the current space. And, uh, phase two would be the, uh, the additional approximately five thousand square feet of warehouse space. Uh, slab on grade, stick frame, wood trusses, flat roof, uh, all the exterior, uh, finishes match the existing building. Um, that's pretty much, pretty much it. We got our state-approved, uh, plans back today on everything, so just here to see if anybody has any questions or concerns, I guess.
I would comment that this, when this was approved, uh, boy, when was that? Twenty seventeen, eighteen?
Correct, the original building?
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
Uh, the expansion area was, I think, shown on
It was
It was depicted on the drawings as future expansion. So
And it's actually not as big as the original.
Always been their intention to push out that direction.
Stormwater, et cetera, it was all planned for the expansion.
I've got one, one comment request on this and I, um, now that I live, uh, real close to here and I walked down to Mulligan's for dinner, been waiting for Jeff to walk in some night so I could point this out to him. There's a gap in the sidewalk, um, on Omni's property here and it's shown oddly enough on this site plan. And I've been meaning to ask why, why that sidewalk doesn't connect there. I find myself walking down Oregon Center Drive to get to Mulligan's.
This is all private drive down here.
Shouldn't there be a sidewalk? Uh, the Journey Above property has sidewalk. Omni has sidewalk up to kind of where it shows, but there's like a, I don't know how many feet gap in there, but it needs to be filled.
That'd be a good comment for, um, uh, North Point when they were doing the
Yeah, it's technically the North Point property, but that private drive, um, if you looked at Access Dame, but yeah, there's actually a four-party agreement between Mulligan's, Journey Above, and then the two North Point parcels, which are now combined into one. They maintain that road, but um, yeah, we could see if that, that it's their section of road, if they could
When Journey did theirs, they put sidewalk along their north border and Omni has it up to where it shows here. So there's just a, I don't know if it's a hundred feet or what it is, but it, it needs to be connected.
And I'm sure if we worked with them, I'm sure we could get a hundred feet of sidewalk put in one way or another. Are you going down there a lot?
That's not a question for this.
It's not going down, it's coming back, that's the problem, huh?
It just doesn't feel right walking down the middle of the road when there's people leaving a, an establishment behind you.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll drive out there and take a look at it.
Okay, I, we don't see any, I don't think anybody has any questions.
I, I do have a question. I mean, I, I don't have any problem with what you want to do here, but are we looking for approval tonight for this?
It's conception.
No, it's just a site plan revision. So those don't require any public hearing. It's, doesn't go to the board. It's a site plan.
But we have no elevations on this. We have nothing to tell us what it really looks like.
Guess it looks like the other building, the, the rest of the building.
There was a, I sent you a couple of pictures there. Essentially, it's the exact same finish, just
Warehouse, warehouse doors.
Yeah. There's a, no, down the end, it's, it's, uh, there's no more overhead door. There's one man door on the end for egress. Um, we're putting a CMU wall between the, the two buildings. We're not opening anything up. We're basically just putting a box at the end of it. We got a fire-rated overhead door in between the two spaces for them to get between the two, uh, the existing warehouse and the new warehouse space and, um, a fire-rated door. And the, the CMU wall will give us our two-hour rating so that we don't have to sprinkle, uh, there's no offices or anything down in that end.
You were pushing the windows and the door out, I think.
We're gonna, we're gonna, uh, we'll salvage them. We'll pull them out and we're gonna reuse them.
On that far wall?
The end.
Yeah.
Yep, they just get pushed down to the end.
But what about on the south, south wall? Looks like you have some fenestrations and windows happening there?
Yep, they're matching the existing, all the finishes. We have, you should have elevations that have all the finishes.
Was that in the original email you sent?
What I sent to you on the temp, yeah. I, yeah, I have a little It's funny, when you go to the, when you go to the street view, it's a field, but when you go to the Google Earth, you can see the building.
Yeah.
To Patrick's point, I do remember that when this came through originally, there were some architectural sort of guidelines that had to be followed with fenestrations. So I think that's probably maybe the angle.
Is it the pricing set?
Uh, yes.
Oh, yeah, there we go. This was one of our late adds to the packet, so apologies for
Did you send it?
Yep, it just has a couple.
What the elevations are in, in that one.
Okay.
Indicated.
Still waiting? There we go.
Should be the pricing set.
Yeah, the plan set that's in here is entirely a civil set.
All right, sorry about that.
And should be, I think, page
Show the elevations a little
Six.
There you go.
There we go.
Oh, there we go.
There we go. So this is existing down to here, right?
Correct, correct.
And this is your addition?
Uh, it's actually in the, the mid, by the window there.
Here, right here.
Yep.
Oh, right here.
Correct. And then, so the stone, we've already, we've matched all the finishes and
That matches.
We're all, we're all set. The stone and the break metal and the, and the EFS will all match the existing.
And then your east, your east elevation is pretty much the same as what it currently is, right? You're just talking about moving those windows.
Correct. The east elevation is just EFS with the same windows, same awnings. We are actually using the same manufacturer for the awnings.
And there's not a lot of grade change?
No, we're actually, there's a little bit of a swale on the east end right now. We're actually building it up. We're not removing anything. We're building it up. Uh, and the, the pond in the front was sized originally for this expansion to pull that out.
All right, I feel better seeing that.
All right.
Sorry about that, guys.
Yep. All right.
I think it's great to see a local business doing well.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes, absolutely.
You have a motion?
We're gonna have one, yeah.
When you're good and ready.
I, I was gonna get there, but, you know, you can run it if you want to.
I'd make a motion to, uh, approve the site plan, provided they, uh, had some sidewalk to fill that. I'm serious, we're doing a site plan, uh, approval. That, that would be my motion.
You are making that in your motion?
Seriously.
I think that's off their property.
It's not their property.
That's not on their property.
That's not their property.
I think our attorney would probably
We, they have sidewalk on their previous addition.
Yeah.
You gotta retract your, your motion.
I'll retract my motion.
Yeah, we'll tie with them.
How about we re, okay, can you read that?
I don't think Omni's party to that.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, with the inclusion of the elevations presented tonight. Um, and the suggestion for additional sidewalk to be added. Can we do that or not?
No, it's, it's not their property.
Yeah, it'd be like saying, forcing them to do something downtown on
All right, then I'll take that part out.
Okay.
I'll make the motion with the inclusion of the elevations presented tonight.
We have a motion, a second.
Thank you.
We have a second, Mr. Maher. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Quite as simple as it is.
Thank you, Brett. Thank you. Turned out to be a three, not a one, right?
On the, yeah.
Okay, seven, uh, E for discussion only, conceptual review of proposed mixed-use development. Two eleven, two nineteen, two twenty-nine, Janville Street. Applicant is AY Development LLC.
All right, so he's getting settled here. I'll just get you all oriented. So, um, a few months ago at a planning staff meeting, uh, we met with this team to talk about, um, three properties that are just east, uh, just adjacent to the Little Buddy's, uh, popcorn location, um, and the team's looking at doing a mixed-use multi-story building, uh, some commercial on the ground floor, uh, four stories above-grade, uh, multifamily underground parking. Um, and got some updated site plans and some conceptual, um, elevations. So I'll hand it over to Steve to kind of talk through the the vision for the project and then we can kind of scroll through some of the images. I'll let you kind of narrate, um, them as we go.
Thanks, Elise. Uh, Steve Schulfer with Sketchworks Architecture, uh, twenty-five oh-one Parmenter Street, Suite three hundred A, Middleton.
Pull that up just a little bit. Hold the microphone towards you.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Uh, you want me to repeat that or you're good?
We got it.
Just for the back.
Um, okay, so as Elise mentioned, we have been looking at three properties on Janesville Street. Uh, I'm, uh, here representing, uh, AY Development as well as the owners, uh, Jerry and Bonnefield, but, uh, we are, uh, But, uh, we are, uh, looking at these three properties for a redevelopment into a mixed-use, uh, multifamily and commercial, uh, development. Uh, as you know, it's fairly close to the downtown area, just east of the popcorn, uh, business. And these are just some conceptual ideas. We're very early in the planning, uh, stages. What we wanted to do is get in front of Plan Commission, uh, understanding that this development would require a rezone to a, a PUD. And therefore, we wanted to get in front of you and get some reaction and just, uh, make sure we were heading on in the right direction before we got too far down the road. Um, what you're looking at would ultimately be a four-story building with underground parking. Uh, we are, this concept right now has fifty-eight total residential units and approximately twenty-six hundred square feet of commercial, uh, leasable commercial space. These would all be market rate, uh, apartments. And the combination of parking, as we've got it shown, is about seventy-nine parking stalls right now. Uh, that's a ratio of about one and a quarter stalls per unit, uh, roughly. So we've included some imagery of just what the property looks like right now from various, uh, angles, as Elise is pointing out. Um, at this early stage of the game, uh, we are still awaiting our, our, uh, site topographic surveys. We're still awaiting our geotechnical reports. So as you can see, this is, uh, early in the process. Um, but what we wanted to do is test the site from a density, square footage, parking, all of the other factors. Uh, on that site plan, so the left-hand side of your screen is representing the underground parking. We've got approximately forty-six parking stalls underground. On the right-hand side of the screen would be the first floor level or at grade. Uh, that level, we're seeking two different driveways. Uh, one driveway would access the surface parking and then the underground parking would proceed up and around. Yeah, just as she's showing. Uh, grade would eventually drop off, uh, towards the north side of the site and, uh, eventually get, get underground. On the left-hand side of the property is just, uh, very limited, small driveway access for, uh, a little bit of commercial, uh, parking for a pickup window. Um, not a high-density drive-through use, but yet something that, uh, a local business could take advantage of. Um, there are no tenants in mind at this time, so that's conceptual. Um, some of these ratios now, as we develop these plans, uh, we're playing around with different unit counts and different, uh, unit styles. Uh, the ratio that you see on the left-hand side of the screen here, uh, basically represents a, a mix of studios, one-bedroom and two-bedroom unit types. Uh, so as you can see there, um, approximately thirteen studios, thirty-three one-bedrooms and twelve two-bedrooms. This is changing a little bit, so I don't want people to lock into these numbers, but that's where, uh, it's, it's when we put our pencils down. Um, as I mentioned, this would, uh, take a PUD rezoning. And so, you know, our understanding is through the course of this process and through the winter, we would be back in front of, uh, Plan Commission at least a couple more times, uh, to go over more developed designs, uh, and, and get your feedback that way. Ultimately, trying to get, uh, a zoning, a rezoning approved, um, early twenty twenty-four, uh, looking at spring construction uh, in a, uh, in a perfect world. This is in TID District Five, so we do anticipate assembling, uh, a TIF request for this. So that's, uh, for a board discussion and we would have, uh, ailerers, uh, work closely with them.
Did you want to talk through any of the, um, elevations? I think page sixty has sort of a three-D concept.
Like I said, everything is very early concept. We understand the, being in the downtown district, we're gonna want to represent some of the historical significance downtown, uh, be complimentary to some of the other buildings. This is a working model. Uh, we stuck it in here so that you could understand that we will have some outdoor balconies. We'll have a combination of masonry and, and siding, very likely something like an LP smart side or, or, uh, uh, to give it more of a, a residential slash, uh, historic type feel. The masonry, uh, obviously reflecting some of the, the downtown areas. Uh, the balconies would be an amenity to the units, of course. And, uh, we haven't gone through colors. We haven't gone through exact percentages of what material goes where. Um, but like I said, this is just a, a working model that.
So this is kind of the commercial, well, is that my mouse?
Yeah, the commercial side.
The drive-through, yeah.
We had, um, looked at a couple of different ways to lay out the, the commercial space in this, uh, in this building. Originally starting it with it on the, on the east or the right-hand side of the building. Um, then ultimately, um, navigating towards putting it on the west so it could be closer to the central downtown area and, and maybe a little bit more pedestrian-friendly with those other commercial businesses co-locating. Um, you know, that's something we're still, uh, working out. Visitor entrance or residential entrance lobby would be in the upper right corner on the screen. So, uh, yeah, so up in that area. There's a elevator and a stair tower and a residential lobby, uh, in that corner.
All right, so love some feedback from you all as they continue to work on their design.
Uh, I'll jump in. Um, I'm struggling with the drive-through window. Um, even if it's low capacity, if you think about the logistics of turning into that on a site plan, you gotta turn left right away and you're, you're, got traffic leaving in the same direction. So you're crossing right away at that intersection.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that, uh, the first thing you, you want to look at obviously is narrowing that drive-through up to at least, you know, skinning it up for one-way traffic. Uh, I'm, I just, I'm not a big fan of that. Even if you were to put something like an, an, I, I don't know. I, I'm not a fan of how that is laid out right now with one curb cut and traffic exiting through that thing and crossing. Um, as, as this would move forward, um, aesthetics, obviously the details, the scales, all that sort of voodoo that you do would have to be worked out. Um, the entrance to the, the apartments itself, I'm assuming is in that northeast corner in the back? Yes. Um, it would be nice to have that engaged with the street at the front a little bit better somehow. If you could flip that, that long run of apartments or something. Um, because you're, you're having people come in a long way. Um, guests like to have sort of a, um, a visual connection with the street or right away, if I'm new to the apartment and I don't know that the entrance is at the back, do I know to drive to the back? Um, I'm assuming that you wouldn't actually, uh, slope the entire parking lot from front to back. I get it's a concept, so I'm just gonna say that and we'll let, move on.
I was gonna point that out.
Um, I have no problem with the commercial space. I think it's awesome, actually. I think that it's in the right location on this property. I also think that this is a great use for those three buildings. It's sort of a, a nice step to, uh, uh, what we had just talked about engaging and, and increasing the viability of a downtown business-wise and density-wise and walkability-wise. Um, and, um, I just, uh, encourage you to somehow activate that street side of the building with aesthetics, scales, proportions. I've mentioned that already.
Sure.
So, um, I think that you've got the big bones of a good project here. So it's the details.
Thank you. Yeah, certainly a lot, lot of work to be done.
And the other thing too, that we'll be, I, I'll be looking for is, um, you have, uh, a commercial space. How, what are you gonna do for deliveries, pickups? Um, because you've got apartments going out over the top of that, it looked like. Um, so that's the other thing too, is aesthetically right now, and I know we're very early, um, that's, that seems uncomfortable. Um, just having it on a single kind of column out there in the corner, somehow making that feel more comfortable.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, we're scratching our heads on that one as well, so you.
Mirrors. Use mirrors.
We're actually hoping the downtown master plan would address some of these challenges.
Yeah, I'll figure it out for you.
Questions? Everybody else have comments? Yep.
I, I agree with John on the street entrance. If you're gonna put a, a building like this downtown that's pedestrian accessible, there should be an entry at the street and not have to go around to the back of the building. Um, I think the challenge you have, I, I like the concept of the project. I like the way you're using that corner. Um, but you've got a, a four-story building, abutting, single-story housing or maybe, maybe two-story housing. So there's gonna be a significant, uh, change in heights. And so to convince me, I'm gonna want to see this building in the context of the buildings that are neighboring it.
What is the zoning at this time of those other properties?
They're all, uh, central business, so, yep.
Okay.
Or, or possibly TR six, the duplex zoning, but there, the comp plan shows them as downtown.
All right, that's, I want to know that. Thank you.
Part of me thinks with the, I know this isn't my time to comment, but, you know, we don't have any other drive-throughs really downtown. Um, and just think about how hard do you want to make that, you know, without a actual user? I mean, if it ends up being a gym or something like that, don't really need a drive-through. So if it's cutting into the building so much and the drives just don't work, you know, maybe it is more of a walk-in type business like everything else downtown.
I think part of the challenge that we're seeing is without any parking along Janesville Street, that makes, uh, viability of these businesses a little difficult. And the nearest public parking on the street is around the corner and up the block. And so from a commercial standpoint, that was part of our struggle with, we knew the commercial wanted to be on what, you know, what I'll call the west side of the building, but yet there was really no directly adjacent parking without walking a block. And so that's where we started with the commercial on the east side of the building, thinking we've got a, a strip of viable parking there. Um, but I completely understand moving it to the west, co-locating it with the rest, uh, presents another challenge for us. So that's where the, you know, part of the, the pickup window, drive-through, the additional four little parking spots you see up on the, on the north side of that, that L shape. Um, certainly something will have to work out.
To Elise's point, it, it may be a conversation, um, with the developer is, would it be more viable to have parking for the commercial space? Or would it be more important to have that drive-through, which is eating up a tremendous amount of real estate? That's your cross to bear.
Sure. Thanks.
You mentioned, it sounds like you may have, may be waiting on some geotechnical work. Um, you'll definitely want to dig in there. Um, staff didn't get into a whole lot of the details that they learned on the senior center site, which is just a few hundred feet, uh, to the north up here, but with soil-bearing capacities for a four-story building, water table for underground parking. Um, I'm, I'm all but certain you're gonna see some real challenges if you get a, a, you know, a full soil borings and, and work, workup done on this. Uh, oddly enough, uh, just to the west, we have a street called Spring Street and I can assure you that they didn't name it that because it was paved in March or April.
Yeah, I think this is a real nice proposal to work with. And it's a considerable change from when that corner was, uh, uh, highlighted Switchgear, which later became the Doyle's, uh, Mid-Central Electric that's up on Market Street. And, uh, it's seen a lot of, a lot of history there and we way back, but it's really, uh, nice to be able to get that pulled together as part of our downtown area in the fashion it is with the multi, uh, use proposal with it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? You got a lot of work to do, but it looks like we welcome the.
Yeah, busy winter.
Good. Thank you very much for the presentation. Anybody else have anything? Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If you say something, tell her.
No?
No, you're good. All right. Thank you, everybody. All right, uh, any other public appearances? Okay, move on to Director of Committee Development's report.
So, um, item B here, wanted to let you all know and thank you again for your, all your work over the last year, more on the comp plan, especially in the park plan as well. Um, we did have our open house about two weeks ago. Um, the committee room next door probably had twenty-five people or so come through and give us some comments. Um, so it's moving through final draft review, kind of going through fine-tooth comb, looking for typos, making sure everything's assigned to the, the right category. And we don't want to reword anything. Um, we are set for our joint public hearing adoption meeting. Um, we're gonna have you guys come, if you don't mind, to the Village Board meeting this time. Um, so that's Monday, December eighteenth at five PM. We'll have this right at the top of the agenda so you guys can get in and out.
Yeah, that's, that's a joint meeting, so it's, yeah, it's not, not a request. We have to try to be there.
Yeah, that was kind of tongue-in-cheek there, so.
I think the public hearing, the public hearing is actually handled by the Plan Commission, is it not?
Yes, yep.
The way I looked at it.
Yep, so we'll have the joint meeting first. Yeah, you'll have the public hearing and then you all will vote and the, the board will vote.
Eighteenth of December?
Yes.
We get double pay for that night, right?
That's, that's it. Christmas is right on. Double pay.
But yeah, if there's any other things that you all, um, if you want to see the final kind of PDF version and do another read-through, let me know and I can, um, you know, make sure you get a copy before it gets to kind of that packet.
Okay.
Date. Um, but all your comments, at this point, all the public comments have been incorporated and it's just kind of that final proofreading, um, review. Jeff, any updates on projects or construction that you wanted to mention?
Paving was supposed to occur today on Janesville. It did not. Um, the latest update we had as of four o'clock this afternoon, uh, according to Lauren, was Monday, Tuesday.
What about the Washington? And I just want.
We're thinking they're maybe gonna bundle all that together. It might be this, it's not gonna, not the same contractor, but it's the same paving contractor.
But you, you don't have the bider even on the other streets yet, so.
Really?
Yeah, really. I just saw it yesterday. No, this morning.
I know, I know. Uh, we're, they're, they're under, they're beyond their completion deadline. Let me just leave it at that.
We still got a couple of weeks before they shut down the plants.
Thanksgiving is what we've been told.
Yep, that's normal. Um, and I see, I, I did see it. I just looked down the road towards Veridian.
Yeah.
And I see, so there's a form truck down there. So it looks like they must be digging some, uh.
Yeah, did you, have you walked back there? I, I drove back there, uh, and those, those roads look great.
Yeah, they do. I, I drove back there a week ago or better, yeah.
So, uh, the curb gutter pavement's done and it looks nice. Yeah, so, and, uh, they said they'd be pulling permits right away, so.
Well, like I said, it looks like there's a form truck back there, so they must be dropping forms for.
Yep.
Something, so.
Yep.
Okay.
We'll start to see that come to life over there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything about the plant staff meetings from, uh, well, just have the agendas we looked at. Anybody have any questions? No items for future meetings? We got enough? Any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hosed, we are adjourned. Thank you, buddy. Appreciate it.